Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this evening's council meeting. To our council audience, apologies, and to everyone in the council chamber. We're starting a few minutes late, but our caucus meeting went a little longer. I will ask that everyone stand as they're able for the singing of "O Canada", and I'm very pleased that the grades four, five, and six junior choir from Jean Steckly Public School, under the direction of Natasha Roth and Nadia Mushani, are here to lead us in "O Canada" this evening. Well, it's been a little while since we've had a choir join us, and so I want to thank everyone from Jean Steckly Public School for coming in this evening. We did leave with your teachers some City of Kitchener pencils and pins as a small thank you for coming in. And I want to also thank all the mums and dads, neighbors, friends, and others who helped drive everybody here, because I know it's a shared responsibility, no doubt. So, thank you very much, everybody. Just when we thought everybody would stick around to watch a good council meeting. It has been moved by Counselor Fernandez that the minutes of the regular meeting held October 24th, 2016, and the special meetings held October 24th, November 7th, and 14th, as mail to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Counselor Gazola.
There's an item coming up under the Committee of the Whole, item B4, that has been...I have declared a conflict while it's been discussed in caucus, so I imagine I have to declare the same conflict at this point.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Gazola. Counselor Singh.
Yeah, on the same item, I would have a conflict as well.
Okay, those conflicts have been noted, thank you very much. Unless otherwise directed, I shall refer the communications as listed on the agenda. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried as well. We'll now move on to presentations. And I don't see anybody from Communications here. So, maybe I'll just acknowledge these two awards. And Communications does report through to Ms. Miller, so we'll ask you to convey our congratulations on to our Communications team. We recently did win two awards from the Economic Development Association of Canada. They're both 2016 Marketing Canada Awards in relation to our Make It Kitchener strategy. And the first one is the Brand Identity Award for Make It Kitchener, was awarded to the City of Kitchener. And the second one was for a single publication, Four More Pages, was awarded to the City of Kitchener. I know a lot of work went into the work that our staff did on this, and it's been a well-regarded document that involved both our city staff and Communications in economic development, as well as our Communications partner, which I believe was intent marketing on this one. So, please, Cory and Jenna, extend our congratulations to the staff involved. And I'll pass these around for council to take a look at them. Congratulations. And I will now invite Tara Gutcher forward from Canadian Blood Services, and who will talk about the need to donate blood over the holiday season. And I want to remind all delegations, both presentations and delegations, that you have five minutes to make your delegations. Welcome, Tara.
Perfect, thank you so much for having me. So, I am Tara Gutcher, the Territory Manager for Canadian Blood Services. I'm here to speak about the importance of giving blood and how we need your help. The City of Kitchener is already a partner, and you've pledged 50 blood donations for this calendar year. Fabulous news is, you've met that 50 donations, you've actually made 54. The not-so-great news is, is that we are not reaching our targets locally, so I'm reaching out to you to help. So approximately every day, every minute of every day, someone in Canada needs blood, and over 52% of the population say that they know somebody that has need blood or have needed blood themselves. There are basic eligibility rules about donating blood, and I can go into them further with you if anybody has any questions. But I just wanted you to know that every year, we lose 40% of our donors. So, that's new donors every year that we need. So, I'm here to talk to you about how many people your donation can touch and when we need it. Personally, I know a friend who has needed 72 blood donations for one car accident. My colleague's son has needed three blood donations as a micropreemie. And what I'm going to talk about today is our weekly need in this region. So, every week, we need 368 donations in Kitchener-Waterloo, and on average, we receive 317. The shortfall to date is almost 2,000 blood donations. And as I said before, we lose 40% of our donor base every year. So, as you can see from this chart, we are not reaching the donations that we need. The time that we need the most help is between Christmas and New Year's. From December 26th to January 2nd, we need 480 blood donations. That's 480 separate people donating blood. Last year, we only collected 280 blood donations. So, that's a shortfall of 200 people coming in to donate blood. And I'm here to ask you to help. So, how can you help? You can adopt a blood donor clinic. As a city, as a ward, or as an individual, you can adopt a clinic. And what that means is you're asking your personal, or professional, or individual networks of any type to come in and donate blood as a team. Just pick one day during that time and come in and support us by saving lives. Takes on average 33 phone calls to book one blood donation appointment. But if people are asked personally by someone they know, they are much more likely to come in. So, if you choose to adopt a blood donor clinic, you're giving life. Every blood donation really counts to help saving a local life. It's helping to increase your profile in the community, and we're going to celebrate your success in the blood donor clinic by partnering with you and honoring you in our clinic that day. It also provides volunteer opportunities if any of your staff or constituents want to volunteer, and it really engages your community. So, these are the dates of the clinics between Christmas and New Year's this year. The KW Blood Donor Clinic at 94 Bridgeport Road East in Waterloo is open six days a week. And there's also a clinic in Kitchener on Monday, January 2nd, at Mennonite Brethren Church. So, I'm just here to ask you to help. Please consider adopting a blood donor clinic and help save lives this holiday season. Is there anybody who would be willing to take this on or has any questions for me at this point?
Thank you very much, Tara, and I know you do a lot of great work throughout the year, particularly on social media and other mechanisms to encourage people to do this. And certainly, I think we can do what we can here internally to promote it amongst our staff and colleagues. Counselor Fernandez?
Thanks, Tara. So, I do, as a real chicken when it comes, and no pun intended for the next item, when it comes to needles, and I panic. I've gone a number of times, I get to the door, and I back out.
Just can't do it.
Yeah, so, help me, help myself get through that door, and maybe, you know, 10 other people with me.
Sure, so what I would recommend for people that have never donated before and are a little nervous, is to bring somebody with you. I started donating before I worked for Canadian Blood Services with a friend. And we went in together, and we donated together, and we were back on the chairs together at the same time. Also, if you talk to somebody, and I can provide those contacts, about people who have needed blood, when you hear of that immediate impact of somebody who has needed blood, does make it a lot easier for you. So, yeah, my best advice would be to go with a person or a couple people that you know. My family, we actually go and donate together on Boxing Day. It's a yearly thing that we've done for the past three years, and we pick up three or four more people every time we go now.
Can you give...I mean, it's a great opportunity to give some public what you need to know before you donate. Are there five quick picks that you can do?
Definitely. So, check blood.ca for your basic eligibility. You need to be 17 years of age, need to be over 110 pounds, need to be feeling generally well the day of donation. If you haven't donated before, I would really recommend you checking that out before coming in. Drink water the day of donation, eat a meal before coming in, and make sure to bring ID with you.
Okay, all right.
Perfect.
Hopefully, I can get there with my family, maybe in tow.
Thank you, and the clerical team does have my contact information. I can send it around again, and if anybody wants to reach out to me personally, please feel free to do so.
Wonderful, thank you so much for all the work that you and your team do. It's so important.
Thank you, too.
Thank you, all the best. Okay, we'll now move into delegations. There is a delegation here who isn't looking to speak, and I think it'll be quite quick. It's Committee of the Whole, 2/2, the Committee of Adjustment, read 1058 Queens Street. And somebody want to perhaps move that item? Counselor Fernandez? Sir Secunder? Counselor Yanetski? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. That item's...I'm not sure who it was that was here for that. That item's been approved, sir. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to the registered delegations. And we have one registered delegation, Mr. Darnell Faulkton? Darnell Faulkton, who's...you can correct me, who's here with respect to chickens. And then we have four other delegations. So, Darnell? Darnell Faulkton? Okay, they don't seem to be here. So, we'll move on to Larissa Smick? What's the correct pronunciation?
Larissa Smuk?
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 Smuk, okay, welcome.
So, I'm Larissa Smick, and I'm from Ward 8. And I'd like to talk about why nobody should be afraid of backyard chickens. And here is my personal story. We bought our chickens three years ago, and we bought them for my 82-years-old father. He moved to Canada and felt that time not very happy, because he lost his friends, he's lost basically language. He had very limited English that time. So, for that three years, we didn't have any complaints from our neighbors, not about noise, not about dirt or smell. And we asked actually our neighbors before we bought chickens, if they don't mind, and they did not. And I think we have opposite reaction. We have support, we have interest, curiosity, especially from children. And to my surprise, except that my main goal for my father to be happy, to be healthy, he and all our family feels more appreciated, more connected to the neighborhood, because we have steady flow of people coming, especially children, to see chickens. And my father doing small tours, the chicken run. And he gives away eggs when the holidays, let's say for Easter. And I think it's really good for community, not for us only. And I don't see any reasons why people are afraid. Probably because it's just unusual. Yes, city is not an usual place for chickens to be kept, but if it's done properly, I mean, food, chickens' feed should be kept close all the time. Yard should be fenced, and chicken run should be fenced. And neighbors should be against before chickens came in. I don't think any obstacles can arise. At least my example doesn't show any. So, I am ready to answer anybody's question if...
Thank you very much, Larissa. There don't appear to be any questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next delegation is Catherine Birlinger.
Hello, everybody. This is my first time before council, and I was kind of driven to come by looking at the notes of what occurred recently and some of the naysayers, whose arguments were not at a satisfactory level, in my opinion. No surprise, since some of them seem not to have even listened to the delegates as they present. So, I have five points that I would like to make. And both my partner and I live in Ward 2 currently. We were in Pioneer Park before that. From the beginning of seeing the discussions come up, we've been in favor of backyard chickens. We may or may not get some eventually ourselves. We have two small terriers right now, so I'm not sure the chickens would be a good match. I have five points I'd like to make, and I think they're well-thought-out and very difficult to argue against. So, the first point is, what kind of future kitchenery want to see? One of the arguments regarded a technology-rich environment, and this can also be an eco-friendly environment. If you look at the good work being done in Germany, Denmark, and the Netherlands currently, you see a balance between advancement of technology, which working at a post-secondary institution, I'm all in favor of, but also food preservation and environmental movement. So, urban citizens have kept hens for thousands of years. Kitchener only forbid it 30 years ago, at the height of the mature baby boomers. And that was a wonderful, but scarred, post-war generation who looked for uniformity and a lack of diversity in many things, including the green front lawns and backyards with one barbecue. We're moving on from that. If you look at the generations coming forward, they're evenly distributed across five large age groups. There's no longer one large baby boomer group that will drive what happens in Kitchener. And these new generations are not the ones that got rid of bees, packaged cakes up into Twinkies, and even outlawed hanging clothes outside in suburban and urban neighborhoods. In fact, the current population is very diverse and has spoken out very clearly, if you read the online survey responses, in favor of having backyard chickens in Kitchener. The fact that a few people are naysayers has never been allowed to determine the democratic process, and those naysayers certainly need to have good reasons for their arguments. From all I have read and followed online, we as a city want backyard chickens and can even work towards celebrating this. Point number two, biodiversity is crucial. I read what the United States Department of Agriculture had to say about avian flu being more likely to attack large commercial flocks of uniform breeds of hens rather than backyard operations. They are not issuing warnings against backyard chickens. Commercial hens are likely non-diverse, while backyard hens, the ones I've seen in Kitchener, Guelph, and other areas locally, are often heritage breeds. Backyard hens and organic gardening serve to protect our food sources for future generations. Number three, in terms of food sources particularly, our local and provincial government promotes local and organic practices, and Kitchener has had many discussions envisioning its citizenry to embrace and practice healthy living. I actually taught a chicken feed engineer in Wallenstein. I was teaching him presentation skills, and he advised me not to feed any growing children eggs or chicken livers from locally-produced industrial eggs. He said that there were hormones, antibiotics, and chemicals in them, and he personally did not recommend that they be fed. And if you look also at food sources, we have stories from Europe in the Siege of Sarajevo, where one of the only food sources was urban hens and urban gardening. So, citizens and cities need to reevaluate their dependency on large-scale industrial food sources. For eggs, we have a simple solution for which the city has already proposed simple and reasonable bylaws for the safety and security and comfort of its citizens. Point number four, risk assessment. Impervious surfaces and flash flooding are much more dangerous to you and to your wards than the backyard chicken proposal. There's no need for a pilot project, as numerous cities have had backyard chickens, nor have significant concerns been raised. In Kitchener, families have been carrying on having backyard hens despite the bylaw, and few concerns have arisen. In fact, I've heard many more discussions about backyard fires in my years in Kitchener than about backyard hens. Tourists come to Kitchener specifically to visit the Little City Farm and other local establishments that promote organic and healthy living. Hens hold little risk to anyone. Indeed, it is likely that more parking noise and dog complaints have come your way on a monthly basis than have arisen from hens, and I don't hear anyone trying to outlaw cars, parties, or canines. The fact that you can't control other people's behavior is not a reason to prohibit a request. I'm a very logical person, and when I read some of the arguments that were raised here, I really could not give them a passing grade. For example, the argument that we have problems with feral cats and therefore shouldn't have chickens. I tried that out on several people at the post-secondary institution where I work, and none of them could make sense of that argument against backyard chickens. It may be true that in Canada, hens have been considered farm animals during my life, but they have been parts of urban environments for thousands of years and currently are in most of the world, including Europe. Number five, family projects. Kitchener prides itself on supporting and having a family environment, and many urban children do not see food sources regularly. We've had kids come by our organic front garden and stop and take pictures of the apple trees and of the sunflowers, and look like they've never actually seen an apple on a tree. How wonderful would it be if we could have children going around Kitchener, as the previous delegate said, making friends, and understanding that food comes from either vegetable plots or animals? Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Ms. Birlinger, for coming in this evening. I know you're passionate on issues of sustainability. Hold on, oh, there's questions for you.
Oh, there's questions.
Counselor Fernandez?
Hi, Catherine. I won't try to say your name last name properly, I don't want to do that. You pointed out some very logical reasons why you see chickens as a backyard food source and that it brings community together. A little bit...what was your comment about the eggs or the engineer that spoke to you? I was a little bit...I just wasn't sure I understood...
Yeah, so, when I was teaching, I asked would he advise our eating chicken eggs? And he said he would neither advise eating chicken eggs from an industrial establishment nor the livers. He was quite okay with eating the meat, because of the amount of contaminants that would occur in the meat would be lower than in the egg, which is the embryo, or in the liver, which attracts those things as well. So, that was his professional opinion, to avoid eating those things from widespread, from industrial establishments.
Okay, that's where I was puzzled, was you were talking about large, commercial farming kind of...
Having a risk for contaminants of the eggs.
Not backyard farm, okay.
Yeah, sorry, yes, absolutely. Backyard chickens will not have that, because they're usually fed organically and free-range.
Okay, thank you, I really...I like the way you made your points.
Thank you.
Counselor Snyder?
Thank you, Mayor Vervanevic. I don't have questions, I just want to, as your Ward Counselor, thank you for coming in and bringing such great information and being engaged in this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's actually been a good thing to get engaged, and maybe back again. It looks kind of an interesting place. Thank you.
Counselor Singh?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for making the presentation. You made a point of perhaps some of us weren't necessarily paying attention. I was trying to research as you were giving your presentation and the points that you were making. So, as you're asking us to keep an open mind, again, to keep an open mind as to what our activity are to better understand what you're delegating, you know, what you're trying to delegate. So, speaking of that, I would agree, a lot of you've laid out a very succinct and sound argument of why, you know, backyard hens should be allowed. That doesn't negate still some of the lingering concerns that I do have, and that's kind of the forum and discussion that I was reading up. And some of the cities have had the same questions of should they be allowed? Apart from all the good reasons that you've already laid out. In a city such as ours, that's becoming more dense in our development, neighborhood issues, neighbor issues. How do you think that could potentially be resolved? Someone who has advocated for this activity and partaken in it yourself, how do you resolve issues that may have happened in your neighborhood?
Can you give me an example? Are you talking just any issue?
Smell, noise, predominantly smell and noise. That's what I was reading, that seems to be the most issues that, you know, come from this. So, I'll take your input.
Thank you. I would predict that, just as with the dog bylaws, we sometimes have challenges that need to have involvement. There may occasionally be someone who raises chickens who is not maintaining them adequately, in which case you may, on the rare occasion, get some smell. But I've been to visit a number of people who keep chickens. I went to Guelph originally when we first moved here, because I was interested in organic farming, and that's been allowed there. And there was no issue of smell. There certainly is the clucking of chickens. But it's kind of nice to go outside into a neighborhood and see squirrels running around, chickens clucking, children laughing. I'm not wanting a sterile environment. I'm quite happy to hear that there are people. And as you say, as urban environments become more dense, we will be more likely to see large numbers of people on the bus and walking around, and I look forward to that. I think that makes things vibrant, and if there are challenges, we can address them.
So, fair enough, and we'll probably be considering, should four be the right number? Or should six be the right number?
I think it's really hard to pick a number. Like with dogs, three seems like a reasonable number, and I think that's what Kitchener has gone with. Four might have been equally reasonable. I think you pick a number, and four seemed to me to be reasonable. Six does not seem unreasonable, right? I think that if you've got a small flock, you look at small flocks, probably anything under 10 chickens. When you get up to dozens, that's pretty large. So, I think four looks reasonably to me as a start.
So, bigger the flock, more noise, I'm guessing? Do they...
The more maintenance. I have four kids myself. The more children you have, the more maintenance, the more money you've got to spend, the more you're running around. I think that, yes, we could say that if you have larger numbers, you've got more responsibility.
Fair enough, thank you.
You're welcome.
That would be all the questions. Thanks so much for coming in tonight. Our next delegation is Rebecca and David Lubitz. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Vervanevic, councilors.
Don't worry, I won't shortchange you. If anything, Ms. Birlinger got extra time.
So, we're both residents of Ward 1, have been for 10 years. And have a couple different things, just a piece of information to bring in and ideas to sort of raise. For me, some of the discussions that have come up have been around. Kitchener is an innovative city. We're trying to encourage technology development, cutting-edge, you know, new things like that. And I would argue that allowing things like backyard chickens goes with that, not against it. My career, I'm an Associate Professor of Engineering at the University of Guelph. I've had several colleagues who raise backyard chickens, and yet are involved in a number of different things that would be considered cutting-edge technology development. And I would argue that these people are creative people. They need to be able to experiment, not only in their work, but part of that is also in their homes and so forth. And to allow people to do creative activities like that, again, that don't impact their neighbors, or perhaps work with their neighbors, but not unduly restrict that. And I think that's a very important thing to consider. And allowing backyard chickens, a lot of the people are interested in it, are not interested in establishing a barnyard. They're interested in it as a portion of their lives, as innovators, bringing new ideas, new technologies, and things like that.
My name's Rebecca Lubitz. I'm also a resident of Ward 1, we're married. I also work in the Downtown Corps as a family physician, and I'd like to speak about the mental health benefits of pets, which includes dogs, cats, fish, other things, also chickens. As Dave has alluded to, as we become more technologically sophisticated, that raises a complex series of issues for our society, one of which is isolation and mental health issues. I spend a lot of time doing mental health as a family doctor in various settings. And especially for our youth, as they become more technologically immersed in their smartphones and their iPads and their video games, there's a huge risk for isolation, not only from nature, but from other people. Pets are sometimes an antidote for that. In fact, you know, when you think about cats and dogs, a lot of people take great comfort from the companionship that they get from those animals. And dogs in particular help people get outside and walk, which is also extremely protective for mental health and a number of physical ailments. a number of physical ailments. Chickens provide a different type of mental health benefit because it connects people to their land, it gives them some control over their food production, and it can be a bit of a carpentry hobby. A lot of the coops, you can buy them, but you can also build them with a minimum set of skills and a minimum amount of reclaimed lumber from various places. So, I think when we look at this, we have to look at, you know, equal access to mental health benefits from different types of animals. When you think about dogs and cats, they're actually pretty high-risk animals. They carry rabies. Chickens don't. And we have found ways to control a potentially life-threatening disease citywide. That's a phenomenal achievement on the part of city council as well as public health. Chickens are a very low-risk animal. They don't bite you, they don't charge you. I run a lot. I don't particularly like dogs and cats, so we don't have any. I have been charged by dogs in various urban forests. My children have been scared in walking past houses where dogs are outside on a leash. I consider some of those owners irresponsible, but I would not go so far as to say ban them because that would be unfair to the vast majority of responsible pet owners who accrue great benefits, physical and mental, from their pets. I don't necessarily see backyard chickens as pets for us, although some of my friends in the chicken movement do. That's fair. We see them more as egg producers and as a bit of a hobby in teaching environmental stewardship to our children. I think if we're going to apply the law consistently, we should be consistent, which means equal laws for equal people. Bylaw has gone through great efforts to be fair in this process, and I think we should all actually, at some point, no matter what happens here tonight, give a lot of praise to Gloria and her staff. I've been involved in many of those meetings. They have done a phenomenal job of creating a bylaw that is fair, reasonable, and safe, and I would urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much to both of you for coming in. Don't leave yet because there's. Counselor Marsh.
I just want to thank you both for coming in. And Dr. Lubitz, as my physician, will you give us a prescription for a family pet at home? Is that we?
That's not a bad idea. Pets are extremely protective. They're often taken to long-term care facilities for their, you know, integrative mental health benefits and, you know, definitely in my work, sometimes pets have been the thing that has drawn people out from a significant mental health crisis.
Thank you very much for bringing that unique perspective. We've heard a lot from a lot of different residents on this issue, but some of your points are fresh, so thank you.
Thank you to both of you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
And our last delegation this evening is Elaine Keiser. Welcome, Elaine.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Elaine. I live in Ward One. At the meeting on November 7th, the suggestion was put forward that a pilot program be established in only wards nine and 10. I feel this would be a gross misjustice to the entire city. While wards nine and 10 may have had the highest number of registered users to have responded to the surveys put out by the city, they are most definitely not the only individuals interested in having backyard chickens. I can say with certainty that there are at least four coops in Ward One alone. I would guess that there are at least as many in all the other wards in the city. The amendments put forward by Bala are a fair attempt to balance the wishes of those who wish to keep backyard hens and the possible concerns of our neighbors. I have to ask Mr. Iannidis and his supporters, why do they feel the need for a pilot program at all? Gloria McNeil and her team have spent over a year researching and coming up with their proposed amendments. They have collected information through an online survey, they have talked to Kitchener residents at at least three different meetings, and contacted municipalities that already allow hens. Is not a pilot project used when we need to gather more information in order to better understand the different factors involved? Of what benefit would such a program be in this case? Has not every aspect of this process already been discussed and examined thoroughly? Have we not already learned what we need to know through extensive research and discussion? It seems to me that in this case, a pilot program is merely a stalling tactic that is unlikely to produce any new information, a huge concession to those few speaking against backyard chickens, and an even bigger punishment to the many residents who are speaking out in favor of it. We are not breaking new ground here. Any guidance needed in the topic of backyard hens is readily available from such forward-thinking municipalities as Vancouver, Kingston, and New York. If these communities can see progress as moving forward in the areas of both technology and sustainable development, why can't we? As one backyard hen enthusiast recently pointed out, if we abstract ourselves too far away from the organic beings we are, who need sunshine and green space and exercise and healthy food, all the technology in the world isn't going to make our lives better. We need to keep balance in the world we are creating. That would be sustainable and desirable progress. With this in mind, please vote in favor of amending the bylaw to allow for backyard hens.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for coming in, Ms. Keiser. And there don't appear to be any questions for you this evening. Thank you. So, Counselor Galloway-Seelock, I'd like to ask you to bring in item number five on the Community and Infrastructure Services Committee, and then I'll turn it over to Counselor Marsh, who indicated she had an amendment. She gave notice of motion.
I guess, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dave Schneider, that the bylaw to amend Chapter 408 for animals in the city of Kitchener be approved, and that also includes the addition that we added in committee with the side yard setbacks to be approved at 2.5 meters rather than three. And also, that if you don't meet those requirements, that if you get consent of your immediate neighbors, you can also put it in.
Okay, thank you for moving and seconding that. Counselor Marsh.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Nope. So, I'd like to bring forth an amendment just to address the concept of grandfathering in those who have more than four chickens, and that would just be, the amendment is that staff be directed to add a provision to the bylaw, allowing residents who owned more than four hens on November 8th, 2016, to keep up to six hens for the lifetime of those hens, provided they meet the other requirements of the bylaw. And I don't intend to raise this as a means to reopen the, you know, the whole debate over and over again, although I invite anybody who has a comment that that's great. But I just, I think that we came to a point at the last meeting where there were several people who wanted to see grandfather clause brought forward, and we didn't quite have the words at the time.
Is there a second for that amendment, Counselor Fernandez? Counselor Etherington.
Question on the amendment to Gloria. Gloria, could you tell me how, what would be the process of this amendment, the content of the amendment? If it is passed, how would you know who would keep six chickens or keep four chickens? Would you do it when you license people? How would it be? And would there be an increased workload because of that? Yes?
Through Mayor Verbanovic. I think we could, we could look at that when people came in to apply for chickens. I think in working with several of the people that we've kind of met through the public consultation process, we're aware of many of them who already have six. But I think there, it would be up to them to satisfy us that they've had six from November 8th forward.
But you wouldn't have to go out and count them?
No, I don't anticipate we'd have to go count them.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded, the amendment. Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
I just want to make comments.
Yep, go ahead.
Having listened in the back, I do get to participate when I'm not in the room, so I did hear everyone's comments, and I appreciate everyone coming in. And I know that one of the delegations mentioned that we should definitely applaud Gloria and her staff, and I just want to take this opportunity. Again, it was done through committee, but to do it again and applaud bylaw for their efforts in this, it's been, you got a great amount of response, which is partly due to our new online engagement tool, Engage Kitchener, which, you know, is new, and I think it was a good place for us to start engaging people through the technology, but also to bylaw staff for all your efforts that you've put into this and really coming forward with a recommendation that has been well-thought-out, has engaged a lot of residents, and I think provides a balance. And so, I really do commend you for that. And because of that, I'm able to sit here today and support what we're moving forward with. So, thank you very much.
Counselor Fernandez.
Yeah, I'd like to take a moment to also thank everybody who participated in the Engage, everybody who came out to the community meetings, and who, especially those who came to the last committee meeting, took time out of their days, and then again tonight, to come and present some very good analysis, logical reasoning, why this can work. And I think the reason we don't have a room full of naysayers sitting in chambers is because Ms. McNeil and her staff did a wonderful job of making sure they covered as many angles as they possibly could. And I think that's really critical for us to know. There was one email that I received where somebody said, you know, don't use Engage as a survey with legitimate and statistically proven. But it also shows that people are willing to put their ideas forward and are willing to support something that's a little bit different. And I think that we're seeing our city change, we're seeing our city grow in a lot of different ways, and this is another way that we can grow and develop. Having urban chickens and having community gardens is all about building community. And we've heard that, over and over, we heard that from people at committee, and I've heard that from people in emails, and we heard it again tonight. That's what we want to do. That's what the neighborhood strategy was about. That's what Engage is about. So, I really look forward to seeing, and a recorded vote is going to be asked from me tonight, full support from council tonight on this, on the amended bylaw. Thank you.
Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and similar to my colleagues, I want to take a brief moment to congratulate Gloria and her staff of the tremendous work that they put into it. I won't shy from the fact that I have been some of, we won of the opposing views as we've looked at the amendment to this bylaw. That opposition wasn't just because I personally don't like this idea. I'd like to consider myself as someone who's, you know, capable of a broad concept in enabling our community to, you know, exercise and, you know, innovate and enjoy all aspects of a vibrant community, and activities such as this has been articulated by the delegates that these are the benefits that are derived. But the opposition necessarily came from ensuring that the opposing view of the residents, and they have been frequent on the other side, that we've heard from as councillors. And it's our responsibility to ensure that their voices are heard, so their concerns can be settled. And that's probably one of the reasons why I see myself in shifting initially what my position was of concern to some satisfaction and comfort, knowing that the bylaw has the necessary provisions that will probably safeguard the concerns that were forwarded, at least to my office, from the residents that had issue with this. And that compliment goes to your staff and your effort in engaging the community the right way of seeing all sides of that perspective so that we get it the right the first time. And so, because of that, you know, I still considered a trial project not necessarily a delay tactic. It was, as I said, just a effort to, you know, allow, to move forward in the right way, that we take all views into account, and not to prohibit, but to ensure the success of it. But I can understand the position that my colleagues have taken on it, and, but again, as I've said, I'm comfortable with the, how the bylaw is laid out, and I've been further comforted and encouraged by the delegations and the passion that you've expressed, you know, of why we should allow this. And it's through your efforts and your delegation and, you know, your advocacy has shown me that there are probably very good players in this, and you guys are that example that hopefully others will lead as well. So, because of that, I will be supporting.
Counselor Gazola.
Yes, as I mentioned last week, I grew up in a small town with a big backyard, and we always had 25 to 35 chickens, so I'm well-used to it. From the get-go, I did not really perceive any problems, but we went through a rather lengthy process, and we did a good job of it. Our staff was, did their job, and did their job well, and did come back with some good proposals. But in the process, we talked to a lot of people. A lot of people got an opportunity to have their two cents worth. And it's just with that, I'm totally in favor of the direction we're moving in, and I didn't see the necessity to go through a trial run and all that. So, as time went on, I became totally supportive. I could see no reasons why not. I do just get a little concerned in this day and age, though, when I'm hearing the word, you know, every story has two or more sides to it, and I hear, I've heard it several times tonight, the word naysayer, which really bothers me, that people do have different opinions, and that's good and that's healthy, and we need a lot of that. And just because someone doesn't agree with us, the word naysayer sounds like a bit of a negative connotation. So, I'm glad we're moving forward, and I just wanted to get my two cents and worth about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gazola. Counselor Iannidis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. A lot of good rapport has been brought forward by the members of the community, and again, with staff. Staff's done a great job. That was never a question. Part of my job as representing an area that I've received comments and voiced different opinions than what is being perceived here. And so, I have to, I have to balance all those needs, and whether some of their concerns make sense or whether your concerns make sense, that's what we're here for, and that's what democracy is. And for me, when we do, when we engage in anything in the city, I prefer to do it in a pilot project because I like to do things in a baby step. I don't like to go and jump into things and then try to peel it back afterwards if it doesn't go successful. Whether it's successful in another community, that may happen, but doesn't necessarily mean it's going to translate into our community. Every community is different. And doesn't mean I'm 100% against it. No, it doesn't mean that at all. Sometimes we've got to make decisions that I personally don't like, and I vote in favor for them, when I personally don't like them. So, it's just the way it goes. We've got to go with what I've heard from my constituents and what I hear as a whole. And what I've heard from my constituents outside of, from here, is the complete opposite. So, that's where I'm sticking with. And without having a pilot project to at least determine whether or not it's feasible as throughout the community, that I won't support it. And with that, that's where I stand, and that's okay. So, that's what democracy is.
Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I've put a bit of thought in this. One of the reasons I like how we do our committee council is we do have two weeks to have a sober second thought, I guess you could say. I still continue to have concerns. I mean, we, as I said before, we hear from, we've heard from the best possible neighbors. I believe that the one couple was a doctor and an associate professor of engineering. I'm concerned about the, perhaps the worst possible neighbors, like politicians. But I'm comfortable the staff has put enough safeguards in place. I guess my other real concern, too, frankly, again, is about the animals. And while I totally understood and read and listened to the facts about how pets can enhance a lifestyle, I guess part of my concern still was that people, you know, they adopt a pet because they want a companion or a family member, whereas I am concerned that some people out there might get chickens as more of a means to an end. Having said that, I have to have faith in the process, and as we mentioned several times, Gloria and her team have done a good job, and I have to have faith that they're going to be able to catch any of these flaws in the system that come along. So... So, I will actually be supporting the chicken bylaw.
Counselor Janetzky.
Thank you. I've heard arguments both for and against and all the delegations here this evening were speaking in favor of it. But I also did have people who emailed me or called me and were in favor, but I also heard people who notified me and were against it. And I gather that in my ward, I have probably more senior citizens living than maybe other wards. So, I think they're more of a group that sort of don't want any issues in their backyards and basically aren't in favor of it. I grew up on a farm back many, many years ago in my younger years and my parents had a couple of dozen chickens. So, I had the experience of living with chickens, I guess you can put it in that way. And I know what they're like. I mean, initially I thought they were fun and cute because that's your first experience. It's the novelty. Then eventually wears off and then you've got to deal with them, with the reality. So, I'm not in favor of it. I'll be voting against it. Really, chickens are a farm use. They belong on a farm. Sure, you like to have them in the backyard and have them as a pet. And I know staff have done a tremendous job in providing an analysis and perspective that favors it. And I can appreciate their work and I think they've done a great job. But in the end, I look at land use, being a land use planner, and we have residential zones, we have industrial, commercial and agriculture. And this is an animal that really belongs on the farm, not in the city. So, notwithstanding some of the pro-comments that were made by the residents of healthiness and lack of problems, et cetera, to me, the bottom line still is a farm animal and needs to be on the farm, not in the city.
Thank you. Counselor Etherington.
Yeah, just very quickly through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd always had throughout this debate, two concerns. One was vermin and the other was the cost of policing our bylaw. I'm satisfied with the vermin concern based largely on what I've heard from people in my ward and people here tonight. I'm still concerned about the latter, the cost of additional bylaw enforcement officers. I'm hoping that the licensing cost will help cover that policing. I will support the bylaw tonight, but I'll be watching for any hiring of additional bylaw officers to cover any subsequent costs of people with chickens in the backyard. But I will be supporting the bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Marsh.
All right. So, there've been a lot of comments around the table and very...
Sorry, do you want to like wrap it up? Because, or do you have a question? Because there's some more speakers. Okay, I'll come back to you then. Sorry. Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I want to thank the delegations that came tonight to speak and everyone who went to a meeting, everyone who went on Engage Kitchener, everyone who contacted their councillor on this issue. I hope this same enthusiasm for engagement carries over to other issues throughout the city as well. And as you said, you know, you may attend another council meeting. This is just great. I think our citizens have spoken loudly and clearly on this. Our bylaw department have done a wonderful job addressing all the issues and I look forward to supporting this.
Okay, I'll just make my comments then before I give the last word to Counselor Marsh. Oh, okay. Go ahead, Counselor Marsh.
All right. I'll leave the last word to Mayor Verbanovic. But I just do want to, you know, say that I remember one of my very first meetings, sitting nervously at this table for the first time. We were asked as a council, as a new council, to discuss our strategic priorities that we'd like to see in this term. And I do remember suggesting that we talk more about sustainable urban food systems. And when pressed for more detail, I did mention things like more community garden support and chickens. And somebody said, "For or against?" Very nervously. And I said, "For." And so, you know, here we are. We made it this far without a whole bunch of chickens in the gallery and it's been a very healthy and very civil debate. And I don't want anyone in the community to think that just because some councillors around the horseshoe are not for this amendment, that there's any reason to think that that's wrong. We are in a democracy here, as has been mentioned, and healthy dialogue is very important. And everybody is doing their very best, I believe, to represent the residents that are in their ward the best way that they see fit. And so, anyway, I'm looking forward to this vote and thank you again to the staff and to all the members of the public who've shared their input.
Thank you. I'll just make my comments now as well. And it's great to see this issue get the level of engagement amongst council as we saw in terms of the level of engagement that it had amongst the public. I do want to add my thanks, as I did at committee, to staff for the great job that they did on handling this file. And more importantly, to all of the residents, those here this evening, as well as the many, many hundreds of residents who participated in this process over the last several months. I do remember, as Counselor Marsh indicated, the day that this got added onto our strategic priority list, I know there was some significant differences of opinion on this issue around the horseshoe and some have shifted, some have not. And that, as has been noted, is okay. But I think if we truly are committed to start looking at issues of sustainability, of issues of food security and so on, these are the kinds of things we need to start talking about. This, community gardens, having neighborhood markets, all those kinds of things speak, I think, to the kind of community we're hearing more and more people want to live in going forward. Some would argue that, you know what, this is a step backwards. And I would argue, in fact, that that isn't the case, that this is really a step forwards and it's recognizing that perhaps along our journey, there were some things that were tried and experimented with that ultimately we've come to appreciate aren't the best direction for humanity going forward. And I am encouraged by the fact that it seems this is going to pass here this evening, that it has so much support in the community. And I think it indicates a willingness with the right amount of work and explanation and dialogue with the community to explore other issues like this that are important for the future of our community. So, a recorded vote has been called. All those in favor? All those opposed? Sorry, did you want to vote against the amendment or in favor of the amendment? Okay. Do we need to redo this then? You can just note it? Okay, we don't need to redo it. It'll just be noted accordingly. Okay. Okay, well then, we'll now deal with the main vote. No playing with the buttons. So, the main motion as amended. All those in favor? Those opposed? That too is carried. So, that's passed. Thank you very much again, everyone, for coming in on this topic this evening. We have one other delegation this evening and that's Heritage Kitchener, item number one, the Built Heritage Emergency Management Policy. And we have KLG here to speak to it.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Ms. LG.
Thank you. Mayor Verbanovic and councillors, my name is KLG. And although I'm here on my own behalf tonight, you may recall seeing me a few times during the attempts to save the Mayfair Hotel and the human hardware from demolition. So, I was really happy to see the city bringing forth a Built Heritage Emergency Management Policy and I still am. I think it's a good thing. And I did attend the Heritage Kitchener meeting where it was discussed. And I do confess that it wasn't until one of the Kitchener Heritage Committee members asked, "If this policy had been in place at the time of the Mayfair Hotel decision, what would have been different?" And then when Mr. Benson-Song and Mr. Seeling answered absolutely nothing, then the shoe dropped for me. So, a few of us went back and looked at the proposal again. And as always, the devil's in the details. In this case, how the policy gets implemented is very important. In fact, I think it's quite critical. And so, that's why I'm here tonight to just bring some recommendation, a few tweaks regarding the implementation of the policy and ask you to add them into it. So, I have five points. Number one, make the process to pre-qualify the qualified heritage professionals that would give advice fair, transparent and open. Number two, there should be clear objective criteria by which individuals become the qualified heritage professionals rightly called for in the policy. So, that way, if a structural engineer who's already done a lot of work for this city ends up getting on the list, it will be clear to the public it's because of her qualifications, which everyone can see, and not because she was well-known to city staff, for example. So, one of the criteria that we'd like to see, that I would like to see, would be demonstrated experience in saving or conserving a heritage building. So, it's not enough for me that the engineer may have advised on the state of a heritage building. No, we should be able to see clear evidence of their involvement and success in stabilizing, rehabilitating and adaptively reusing a heritage building. So, to use an analogy, if I went to a garage and told them I'd been hearing this weird squealing noise in my black wheels and it was taking me a long time to come to a stop, one mechanic might examine my car and then tell me, "Your brakes are likely to fail and you must stop driving your car immediately." But another mechanic could say, "Your brakes are likely to fail. You must stop driving your car until we can fix it and here's how I can do that for you." So, that's the difference I'm looking for. So, we should be looking for heritage professionals who've actually fixed a building. Fourth point is that it should be individuals rather than firms that are qualified. So, even if we had a case where a firm was full of structural engineers who'd all had extensive experience conserving heritage buildings, it should still be the individuals in that firm because we can't take the chance that at a critical time that the city needs advice to decide on the fate of a threatened building, that the firm might delegate that critical advice to a junior partner or a senior manager who's recently been hired because all the qualified, all the experienced people rather, we had a convention, say, something. We cannot assume that this kind of specialized, gained-on-the-job knowledge is easily transferable. So, that's why we're asking for individuals rather than firms to be the qualified heritage professionals. And in the case of a threatened building, such as was the Mayfair, the advice given to the city should include steps needed to save the building. Now, these might turn out to be really expensive, they might have a lot of technical challenges, so they might be advice that the city ends up rejecting. But at least the options would be out there for people like me, heritage advocates, to see and for the public to know what the options were. So, those are my five points that I wanted to make and I thank you for the opportunity to bring these forward and hope that you will consider adding them into the Built Heritage Emergency Management Policy.
Thank you very much, Ms. LG, for coming in. We do have some questions for you. Counselor Janetzky.
Yeah, thank you for coming in. And I know you sent that email just late this afternoon with those five points and we were in committee meetings and I was just trying to quickly read it and put it together. And I really didn't give it much thought, although I sort of, with a quick scan, I sort of knew where you were coming from because I knew you appeared at the committee meetings before. But the recommendation from the Heritage Committee is sort of straightforward based on the staff report. I'm just wondering what you have there. How do we incorporate that or do we just delay this whole thing? And then I'm just wondering, like Leon Benson-Song, our heritage planner, I have not heard from him, like what his comments would be in terms of, is this sort of like really a last minute, last, last minute throw-on, you know?
Yeah. Well, I apologize for that. In fact, we did have a meeting with Mr. Benson-Song and Sandra Parks about this. And I'm really not sure what their opinion was about this. So, I'm at a bit of a loss too, to say whether that's easy to do. To me, these points seem to talk more about how the policy is implemented. And like I say, it was that the question and answer period during the meeting that kind of said, "Oh," you know, because it looked good on paper and it does look good on paper. But I'm just saying, it's fine-tuning about it. But I would like to make sure that the fine-tuning gets done, so.
Yeah. And I appreciate that because the report that went through, and I know you were there when it was presented back at Heritage Committee, is the policies and regulations and steps that is based on a template from the city of Hamilton. And we more or less duplicated and fine-tuned it and tweaked it to suit our needs. And I'm just, from what I read from the email this afternoon, I gather those portions are incorporated, but I've been rereading the whole thing, I just didn't have any time. So, I'm just wondering whether you're comfortable about just moving forward without your five points that you made being included? I don't know how they would be included because I don't know where you put them in offhand and just, or do we go back to the committee and take it from there again?
I would like to see them included and I think it would be spelling out the qualification, pre-qualification process a bit more because that wasn't really spelled out. And would like that to be transparent and open so that we know if somebody has been qualified, you know, what is their actual experience? Because in an emergency situation, that would be the heritage, qualified heritage professional that a number of us had asked for the city to consult. So, I think it's quite important that we do have someone who is seen to be and defensively qualified.
And I can appreciate where you're coming from, but I thought there was a section in there that talked about pre-qualification and meeting certain criteria for the standard of the engineers and architects involved with heritage across Canada. And once they meet the certain standard, then they would be pre-qualified. Are you taking this in a different direction or a step more detail? I don't know. That's why I'm looking for response from our heritage people, our heritage planners, to tie this thing together.
And so, actually, before I continue on with the questions, I'm going to ask staff because staff have indicated that, in fact, some of these things are addressed. Mr. May?
So, through you, Mr. Chair. I have spoken to the chief billing official and to Mr. Benson-Song. And I can provide the good news first. The good news is that on four of the five points, we agree and believe that the policy in front of you addresses those. So, I'll try to touch on those quickly. First of all, the issue of whether an individual should be designated or a firm should be designated. We absolutely agree. The policy before you requires an individual to have what is known as a CHAP or Canadian Association of Heritage Professionals designation. That designation isn't given to a firm, it's given to an individual. So, that's the first point. The second point around that the professional should have some experience in saving and conserving heritage buildings, we agree. The CHAP is a national organization. The CHAP is a national organization, a very reputable firm that has a very robust selection criteria, so it's not one of these organizations where, if you pay a fee, you get on it. There's a rigorous application process, you have screening to be done, you have references to be checked. You don't get on it if you're an intern, as an example. The third piece that we agree on is the issue of the advice that's being given to city staff should include steps to save the building. The definition of the word "advice" in the policy before you actually speaks to conservation options, of which one would be to save the building. The fourth piece that we agree upon is an issue of a peer review, and the policy before you allows the chief building official to request a peer review. So four out of those five points, we agree on and believe that the policy before you achieves what the delegation's asked for. The one point where we disagree is the need to create a separate pre-qualification process here at the city. We think it's better to have a third-party organization of national reputation, such as the CH, CAHP, who can qualify these individuals. It's more efficient, it's the Canadian-recognized organization, and so we think they're the best ones in place to tell us who is a qualified heritage professional.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. May. Councillor Janetzky, you still have a few seconds, if you have any follow-up questions?
Well, yeah, based on the comments from Mr. May, and hearing the response to the five points that she made, I would be prepared, and I'm looking for guidance from the clerk or from staff, on going forward with this recommendation that Heritage Committee had adopted, and including four of the points that were addressed by Mr. May, that was pointed out by LgK, be included in the recommendation of approval. And I'm not sure how that would be worded, and I'm looking for some assistance here.
Mr. May?
So through you, Mr. Chair. I think my point is that staff believe it is already included in the policy before you, so there's no need to add an amendment.
Okay, and that's what I wasn't sure of, because I thought, to some degree, but without having seen all the details, reading it thoroughly, I was just sort of up in left-field, looking for assistance here. So if you're saying that her points would be included and can be analyzed as part of that vision, then we can just go forward with this recommendation of Heritage Committee.
Yeah, so let me just really be really clear by repeating one point, just as an example. The delegation has said that when we're looking for qualified heritage professionals, we should be looking for qualified individuals, not firms.
That's right.
Our proposal does that. Because the CAHP is not given to a firm, it's given to an individual. So that's just one example of what I mean by, it's already in the policy before you.
And I would agree with you on that, because it is the person that makes the opinion, not the firm, because it could be a number of people that are not qualified in that firm, so. I don't have any further questions, too, but I'm prepared to move forward after anybody else has got.
I'll come back to you, Councillor Fernandez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. May, for that further explanation. Kay, now that you've heard what Mr. May has said, and that four of the points are in agreement, do you feel more comfortable with moving forward on this, or are there really some other outstanding issues?
No, I don't, because I don't feel that the Canadian Association of Heritage Professional designation is sufficient criteria, because it is a fairly general designation. The categories are very broad. So it wouldn't address the point I had about some demonstrated experience in saving or conserving a heritage building. It would not address that specifically, because people are qualified as architects or structural engineers, or, you know, I mean, they're very broad. So that is really the key point that I'm looking for there, and it would not be addressed by just using that designation.
Is there, I mean, pardon my lack of education on this, but is there a designation that you would think that would be more applicable and would hold heritage to a higher standard?
No, I'm not aware of anything. Initially, I was prone to the Canadian Association of Heritage Professionals, but on further examination, I think that something quite specific needs to be drawn up here. And that, you know, that's one of the key points for me.
Okay, all right. You always do your research so well, and you present so well, so I really appreciate you bringing this forward, because we would not have had that fuller understanding, and, you know, Mr. May has been able to give us a few more points of clarification. I have a question of staff. Thank you.
Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, I don't have any questions of the delegate. I really have a comment, and I was prepared to consider deferring this to a later date.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Councillor Etherington?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I would certainly support that deferral. If it was not made by Councillor Gazola, I'd be ready to make that. I've always shared these concerns, and I certainly picked up on that concern in the media coverage of the heritage subject. I want to see this dealt with, because I'm puzzled at the answer to the question, and that's at the heart of this issue, would it have made any difference in the Mayfair case? If not, why are we bothering? I want it to make a difference on cases like the Mayfair, and I want to see a policy that does make a difference on issues of that nature. So I'll certainly support a deferral, even sending it back to the Heritage Committee and Mr. Bensonson. I understand why he's not here tonight, but I'd like him here. Thank you.
Okay. There don't appear to be any other questions. I do have one for you, Ms. LG, and I'm just wondering, you said you originally were a supporter of the designation, and now you're not. Why is that?
Well, originally, I thought, as did Mr. May, that the best thing is to have some externally-recognized criteria, because I was interested, as I continue to be, in something that's objective and fair and transparent. And it seemed to me that the Canadian Association of Heritage Professionals had some of that. Now, since then, a couple of things have happened. I was asked to be a reference for someone applying for it, so I know the questions are quite general, because I don't have any professional experience as a heritage professional, although I'm certainly an advocate. So that was one thing. And the second thing is, as I've mentioned, you know, that they're broad categories. So I feel that it would be more appropriate to have a specific, some specific criteria drawn up here, and that those be the way that we pre-qualify these people, because when we need them, we're going to need really good people.
Okay, I guess I'm just struggling, because there is a national designation that exists, and you don't seem to be happy with it. And so I'm guessing, is this about individuals, or is this about the designation itself?
The, it's a voluntary thing to be a member of the Canadian Association of Heritage Professionals. You pay your dues, and you get to put those letters after your name. It's quite a different thing from being a certified architect or accountant, something like that, you know? I mean, it has some credibility. It's not like becoming a member of ACO, pretty well, anybody can do that. You know, there's a bit more involved in it, but it's not as rigorous as being a member of the Professional Engineers of Ontario or something like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Questions of staff? Are these questions of staff, Councillor Gazola, or comments, or your deferral? Okay, I'll come back to you. Councillor Fernandez, questions of staff? Go ahead.
So, Mr. May, has that level of expertise been reviewed? Or was it something that our heritage planners were comfortable, would cover off the specific, the specis, whatever, you know what that word's going to be?
Sure.
It's not going to come out right.
I've got you, yeah.
Yeah, would be for, especially for talking about an emergency policy.
Yeah, so I can assure you that Mr. Bensonson has done a significant amount of research into this area, into this CAHP, including speaking directly to a member who's on the selection committee, in order to fully understand the process by which you become designated. And it is not that you simply pay your dues. There is a rigorous process in order to get this done.
Okay. If we were to send this back to planning staff, heritage planning staff, is there something that you would see them do more of or change in this policy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. What you have before you is the professional opinion of heritage planning staff and the chief building official, who have found what they believe to be a very good policy. It was also supported, I believe, somebody could correct me, but I believe unanimously at Heritage Kitchener. So I do question, if it is sent back to staff, left to our own, we will bring back, likely, the exact same policy you have before you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Councillor Davy?
Sorry, comment?
Comment? Okay, I'll come back to you. And so, actually, my question was just answered in terms of, you know, if we send this back, would anything change? And I'm hearing, not likely. Councillor Gallois-Locke, that's a comment or question? Question, go ahead.
Might be a difficult question for you to answer, but this seems to have come to light, and part of the rationale for this is because of what happened at the Mayfair, why we're requiring an emergency management policy. But part of why we're having this broader discussion today is because of a comment made at Heritage Kitchener, that it wouldn't change the Mayfair situation. Is that simply because it was too structurally unsafe to do anything, or is it because the policy isn't strong enough in order to save a building?
Yeah, so I wasn't at the committee meeting, so I can't speak to the answer. What I can say, if you were to ask me that question, could something similar happen within this policy? It could. I think it is much less likely, based on this new policy and some other changes, frankly, that have come through Heritage Kitchener, to change our internal procedures.
So the whole purpose of this policy is to try and mitigate anything like the Mayfair as long as we can, but there may still be situations where it's too structurally Mayfair debatable, everyone has their own opinion on that, that's fine, but aside. We may still end up in situations like that, even though we have a policy like this.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I do want to be clear that this policy is very clear. The decision and discretion around demolition is, it can come down to the chief building official if it's matters of public safety. And so, I don't remember the exact language, but it basically says, wherever possible, we will do these things, but in situations like that, we will have to act accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Marsh, you have a question?
I do, I have a question. Just a question of staff about, how onerous would it be for us to add in our criteria for the professional, you know, opinion sought? How onerous would it be for us to just add that we require the professional engineer to show their experience in preserving heritage buildings in the past, and just to name some of those addresses that they've preserved in the past, as an addition to the criteria that's already outlined in the policy?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, I think that actually comes back to the question that was just asked. We need to have a system in place where we can go like that, that we can get somebody, because we need to get them in on emergency situation. And so I would hate to have to be checking references at that point. And so that's the beauty of the CAHP, is that that's already done by a third-party organization. The other valuable thing, by having Canada's largest national reputable organization like this doing this work for us, is it's a third party. And so it could never be questioned, you know, if we were to do some evaluation and pre-qualify people, somebody might accuse us of being biased. And so we're going to give that to a third party to determine who is a heritage professional and who isn't.
I think just the delegate's point, you know, which I feel is well-taken from my perspective, is that you can be a member of that association and never have worked on restoring a heritage building, and that experience, that hands-on type of going through the process of restoring a heritage building or saving a heritage building, is something that could really bring value and accountability to the public when we are faced, God forbid, should we be faced with something like that soon again, but, you know, when we are faced with a situation like that in the future.
So through you, Mr. Chair, that's absolutely not my understanding of how this organization works. And speaking to Mr. Bensonson, I think it was this afternoon, you know, he has spoken to a member of the selection committee. This is not some interim in a massive company that gets a designation like this. These are people who have done that work.
Who have restored a building.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll, I have three people who've indicated they want to make comments, so I'll take those now, and then come to Councillor Gazola's motion for the deferral. Councillor Gazola, did you want to start with your comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just, I'd like to just give a little bit of background on this. There is a lot more debate and discussion taking place tonight than did at the Heritage Committee meeting. I was the one that asked the question of, had this been in place at the time of the Mayfair affair, would there have been any difference? And the answer was no. And Ms. LG was there, and did come prepared to speak, but I imagine it was quite a shock for her to hear that, and didn't. We didn't, I don't feel we really had that good a discussion at that committee. And then when the question, I haven't had, didn't have an opportunity to follow all of Ms. LG's comments in her email that was sent out, but it appears now that staff got together, and they were happy with the discussion they had. I mean, there's no, it's, I think it's necessary that we try to come up with better rules and processes, but there's no urgency that we pass that tonight. I would prefer to see this go back to the Heritage Committee and have the entire Heritage Committee with staff to go over some of these points. I think there are a lot of very valid points. We've heard, we've heard staff side of it, I haven't heard from Mr. Bensonson, but I would prefer to see this, and it's no big issue, to have it go back to Heritage Committee and defer this until, bringing it back to council until after the next Heritage Committee meeting. Now, that's what I will move.
Okay, I will, I'll come back. So that next Heritage Committee meeting, just for everyone's note, isn't until January 2017, so the deferral really means until after that, and it also means that it will be the new Heritage Committee that, in fact, deals with it, and not the old one. So I would imagine they'd be revisiting, or they would be trying to be brought up to a speed, brought up to speed on an issue they haven't looked at yet. Mr. May, you had a?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I was actually just going, I thought it was a question, but all I was going to say is, I think that if you're looking for a deferral, that is a more meaningful deferral. Staff's position isn't going to change on this, so it does make sense to go to Heritage Kitchener, if that's what you wanted to do.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Davy?
Thank you. I listened carefully to the arguments, and I don't really see enough rationale to send it back to what's essentially going to be a new Heritage Kitchener. I also think that the, holding up the benchmark of the Mayfair, I'm not exactly sure what I was hoping to be achieved in terms of, would things happen the same way? Because in my understanding, that precludes the possibility, and it happens to be the possibility that I believe, that nothing really could have been done with the Mayfair, and it was just an unfortunate accident. What this does is it does strengthen the ability in situations that we can have some sort of impact, so I am happy to support the Heritage Kitchener's recommendation, as I understand, unanimous recommendation as it is.
Councillor Janetzky.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brevanovic. Understanding the circumstances that happened with the Mayfair, it, I think it's something that, you know, it did bother some residents, but when I look at this designation that staff is approving the CAHP, and I'm looking at the executive officers of this organization, and it's, they have credentials to the moon, like it's, they have so much experience in building districts, heritage districts, working on Parliament Hill on some of the projects that, that they're there. These guys aren't the experts, I don't know who is. So I think, I think the rationale is, of the new stuff that the chief building officer at Heritage Kitchener, I think, covers everything that Mrs. Algey is really, really, really concerned about. I don't see that there's anyone else out there that could, could actually be, unless you have someone in particular.
Counselor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Brevanovic. A building is declared unsafe, not by opinion. It's declared unsafe by a collection of facts and data that are legislated. So when those facts are reached, the conclusion is that our chief building officer is legislated to declare the building unsafe. Now, there are buildings that have deteriorated greatly, but are not declared unsafe. Those buildings can be saved. I just don't want to be in a position where an opinion can delay the decision that our chief building official has reached to declare a building unsafe.
Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll repeat, I don't want to see a repeat of the Mayfair disaster. For that reason, I'll support the deferral back to Heritage Committee. I think that a better, more carefully considered policy would result in some second thoughts before any demolition, even if it involved an opinion where we had a potentially unsafe building. That's the whole point of this exercise. So I don't see any need to hurry, and I'll support the deferral.
Okay, it appears that all of the comments have been made. I won't be supporting the deferral. I've listened to all of the arguments that have been, that have been made here, and it seems to me that, in fact, both the staff work that has been done on this has been well thought out and measured. The considerations by Heritage Kitchener have been well thought out and measured, and I'm not convinced that anything new is going to come out of this. I think, at the end of the day, we've got the benefit of a Heritage Committee who has been through the experience of the Mayfair, has the ability of all of those lessons that have, that have been learned, and has ultimately been in support of this recommendation. I think what, what concerns me even more is the notion that somehow, some city of Kitchener process on its own would be better than a, than a national process. And I don't think that that would necessarily get the same level of, of public support if we were to be in this situation again in the future. So I won't be supporting the deferral, and we'll be supporting the recommendation coming out of Heritage Kitchener. Counselor Gazola, you've asked, I guess, for a final word, and to make your motion?
I made the motion. Yeah, just a quick final word. There are two items here. I mean, it's something that we need to do, but it's not urgent that we decide this tonight. And I'm amazed at the other side of the room who are always talking about, let's really look at this, let's, let's do it right, let's not make a mistake. In most cases, that can involve a lot of things, but in this case, it just means sending it back to the committee, and let's face it, you're going to have a whole, whole different group of people there, get a whole, whole different opinion. You don't get the same kind of public engagement involved with matters of heritage like that. There just aren't, there aren't that many people that do take an interest and would come out and speak about it. But we do have here someone that has been involved, and it is somewhat of a professional, that's just tweaking something and asking us to perhaps take a second look. And I know, I'm on the committee, I don't mind reviewing the issue again. I don't think a great deal of time is lost. I don't think a great deal of owner's work is put on the committee, and maybe it's a great introduction to, to a new committee. So I would, I would urge members of council to let, let the committee have another look at it, and let's really make sure of it. And I would ask for a recorded vote. Thank you.
Counselor Gazola, your motion then is to defer it till after the next meeting of Heritage Kitchener, correct?
That would be, that would be ideal, but maybe it may take an extra meeting after that. Again, I don't think it's, there's the urgency that it has to be done at any particular time, so.
Okay, well, we do need a time to go with the deferral motion, so should we say by the end of February?
I would, I would...
Okay.
Was that a yes?
You could, you know, what the clerk has said, instead of a deferral, you could refer it back to the committee instead.
Same thing?
Essentially, but it doesn't necessarily have a date on it.
Doesn't put any dates on it. Yeah, okay, that's...
Okay, so I will...
I'm sure everybody will support that.
I will take your motion for... Is there a second or...? So Counselor Etherington, okay. Recorded vote has been called on the deferral, on the referral, rather. Those in favor of the referral, those opposed to the referral. And the motion does not carry. So we'll now go to the original recommendation. Counselor Yonetski, did you want to bring it forward?
The Heritage Committee recommends that the built heritage emergency management policy is outlined in Appendix A of the Community Services Department Report, CSD 16074, be adopted.
And it's being seconded by?
I'm assuming Counselor Gazola voted for deferral, so I'm not sure. I'll give, throw it over to him.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Gazola. That is correct, Counselor Gazola. Okay, I think we've discussed this. I presume people want a recorded vote on this? Okay, recorded vote has been called. All those in favor, all those opposed, and that is carried. Thank you very much for coming in this evening on this item. We'll now move on to the tenders, and Ms. Palmer is here with respect to the tenders. Does somebody want to move the tenders? Counselor Adonis? Any questions on the Dell storage expansion? Any questions on supply of electrical... Oh, okay, sorry, I need a second for the tenders. Counselor Fernandez, thank you. Any questions on supply of electrical materials and lighting solutions? Any questions on architectural hardware? Any questions on Old Mill Road bridge rehabilitation? Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. Since this project is in my ward, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that this is not, this is the work as well as the consultation. Because I thought we had already done the consultation. We've had PICs, we've had, a lot of pre-work has been done already, so are we not ready to go to detailed design? No, you know what? I apologize. I'm confusing this with the Old Mill pumping station. That's...
Okay, so no question then?
My question is moot point.
We will waive that question, move on. Any questions on the sewage pumping station, pump, and motor control, maintenance, and repair? And finally, any questions on inter-facility mail services? Counselor Fernandez?
Yes. So I know it says in the, in the, in the report that we don't have staff with this kind of specialized knowledge, but help me understand the difference between the pumping station motor and somebody who's an electrician. If they're a qualified electrician, they should have, they will have a huge array of expertise. And this is my understanding from speaking to an electrician, that they're, they're saying, you know what, I would know how to do this. We do, we do have electrician staff, do we not?
Sorry, yes, Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair. Let me back up a little bit. A SCADA system is basically like a digital computer that, that runs all of the functions of our pumping stations, and runs all of them centrally. So it controls basically the pumping station functions, it ensures the reliability of those functions. So it's like, it's like sort of the mini-heart of these pumping stations. So it's a very specialized system that requires some specialized skill. Ten years ago, when we put these systems in, it was basically proprietary. What we're looking at now is specifying a different system, and to your point, Counselor Fernandez, in the next five years, when we've replaced the SCADA system in all of our pumping stations, then we should be able to look at industrial electricians being able to, to handle this system. It's also used, we need the service on an on-call emergency basis as well.
So because it's an on-call service, this is, we will only be paying when they come out and do the work?
We would be.
So we may not actually ever get up to the amount of, that's here quoted in the tender. We're just setting that money aside in case we need them. Should we go over budget, what happens? Sorry, that was a double, double question.
Through the chair.
We're sitting, we're setting aside $131,000 aside for on-call work. Should we not acquire or that work to be done, that just stays within the budget or kicks, runs over for the next year, right?
Through the chair. That is correct. Because the SCADA system is coming to the end of its life cycle, though, we want to put some contingency money aside.
Okay. And have we ever gone over budget on this?
Through the chair, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You don't want to speak anymore?
Through the chair, I was just going to say, if there's a surplus in the account at the end of the year, or get closed out to the stabilization reserve fund for sanitary sewer.
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, this, this is the one that where the labor is increased by 100%, and yet we, and we've only had one, one bid on it. Is there nothing we can do? Can we not look at this one again, or?
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So as noted within the report, although the labor costs have risen substantially, the pricing that we're seeing is in line with the pricing that we received when we went out for bid on this two years ago with the unsuccessful bids.
But we only had one bid on it?
But historically, I believe it was two years ago, or, sorry, three years ago, 2013, we had gone out for this service with similar, and the pricing we received on the bids that were not successful were in line with this pricing.
And they're out of business now, I guess? Is that it?
The incumbent who we've had for the past 10 years has now retired.
All right, thank you. I also had a question on number one. I'm sorry I wasn't here.
Sorry?
I also had a question on number one.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm just wondering, I'm not sure if it was discussed at all, but what is going on here? Why, is this a new problem? Have we always had this problem with...
Mr....
Is this something new, basically? We're looking at a fair chunk of money, and if it's something new, I'd like to just understand it a little better.
Mr. Higgin?
Mr. Mayor, it's, it is in, it is something new for the city, it's, but it was discussed and approved as part of the 2016 budget.
Okay, then you caught me. I wasn't aware of it. What, what, what did we discuss and approve? What is, what's new about it? What, what is it that...
It's providing a fail-safe capability that we do not have right now. So we have servers located at City Hall. We're also putting in a system at the COF that would act in one sense as a fail-safe. So if we're not able to access the servers here at City Hall, we have that backup. It also will optimize the system so that we can run our systems on both servers concurrently.
Have we had a lot of problems with this?
Through the mayor, not that I'm aware of, but if something were to happen here at City Hall, we wouldn't have a, we wouldn't have a good backup system to get our systems back online.
So for 50 years, we didn't have any problems, and...
I would say for 50 years, we haven't been running the same systems that we're currently running.
Yeah. I found it interesting that it's, it's a Dell system, and Dell didn't even win the bid. It seems a little, little screwy. Thank you.
Okay, so it has, the tenders have been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. We'll now move on to the reports of the committees, starting, oh, actually, just one sec. Mr. Farwell, are you looking to be a delegation on the, or just here to listen? Okay. So, Community Infrastructure Services Committee, Counselor Galloway-Silak?
Yes, items one through six, we've already dealt with. Number five have been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dave Schneider.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gazola?
I wanted, oh, I want to deal with number six separately.
Okay, we can do that. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay, Counselor Gazola, you have a comment on that one?
Well, I have, I have a couple of, I did not support this when it came to council, committee, two weeks ago, or whenever. I just have a couple of questions. This is a, this is a plan going forward for the next 15 years or so, and substantially fairly expensive one. One of the large amounts of money, and I might have asked this, but I'm not sure what the answer was, we're going to be spending a lot of money on a market, a market-based strategy. Five, $600,000 a year for four or five years in a row, and then, and then an additional, what is that? It's part of our master plan here.
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor, that is to market the credits, so people aren't paying the flat fee, that they actually implement low-impact development on their property. So rain barrels and different tools to reduce stormwater generation. So it's part to increase the capture rainwater, but also to put relief on people's stormwater fees.
So it's a substantial amount of money that you're going to be spending over that 15-year period, right?
Through the chair, that is correct. So part of it is pilots and different things, and part of it is marketing around it to get people to take up the program. Right now, there's been low take-up on that, that program specifically, but it does offset work that we would need to do elsewhere in terms of stormwater ponds and other things.
So as a result of doing that, where will we be saving some amounts in other places?
Through the mayor, that's correct. So the more people that take up this type of work on their properties means less stormwater management we have to do in public right-of-ways or in parks or other locations.
Okay, another question. The accelerated infrastructure program, is that, was that included in these $80 million figures that we're, we have planned for the next 15 years? Is that over and above that?
The stormwater master plan implementation is a component of that total increase, but the ARP program does not implement the stormwater master plan. So it's the other category.
So it's in addition to that? So how... So it's in addition to that. So how, how can you have a master plan that doesn't have that big component in it?
Through the mayor. So the ARP funding goes towards projects where we're doing road reconstruction. So there are stormwater oversizing of pipes that are included in that work.
No, no, I know what it is. I don't have any arguments with it, but, but how can we have a master plan when there's such a large amount that isn't included in our master plan?
Through the mayor, I'm not sure I'm quite following your question. The funding is within the funding envelope that was previously communicated to council. So the implementation of this master plan is within that funding envelope. It is a separate segment to ARP, but it's equally important in terms of increasing our stormwater management in the city.
But it's not in that master plan funding that you, that you presented that council has approved?
Through the mayor, all the work outlined in here is within the funding projections that staff presented a few years ago. There's $40 million of deferred work that the master plan cannot achieve at this time based on limited funding.
Oh, I, I know that too, but that's beyond the deal. Okay.
Mr. Hagy, can you provide some additional insight?
I'll try. I believe the master plan includes essentially stormwater-only projects, whereas the ARP is water sanitary and stormwater projects all bundled together. So I hear Counselors Gazola's concern. You would think a master plan includes all things that stormwater is funding. The focus of this is otherwise.
That's what I expect, that the master plan will include. And the, the accelerate, I realize the accelerated program takes into wa, concerned roads and water and sewer, but whatever take, whatever is the portion coming from the stormwater should be included in here. Okay, but it wasn't. That's fine. I, I, I do give you credit. I may go into a comment now if I could, okay? I just, my comment is that I, I didn't support this when it came, because I, I get a little leery over, we approve master plans and then we come back a couple of years later and approve the business plan to go with them. But in this case, you did at least put forward a, a, a plan along with, with expenses that are involved, that are contemplated, and it gives us a much clearer picture. A problem I have, and it's, it's the fact that we really shouldn't be approving that master plan, because in order to fund that master plan, the first couple of years or three years, you're changing around a lot of the capital projects, and maybe rightfully so, so that you would have the funding for the master plan. But yet council doesn't deal with the capital program until next week. So how can we make those decisions to fund this master plan when we haven't made a decision on the priorities that we're going to be changing around in the stormwater projects? We've sort of got the cart before the horse.
Mr. Ryan?
Through the mayor, I was going to use analogy chicken and egg, considering what we considered tonight, but I would say in one way you need to consider either the master plan and approve it before the budget's approved, or you approve the budget before the, the master plan's approved. One way or another, you're going to have, unless they were dealt with concurrently on the same day, you'd have to deal with one before the other.
I have no problem with that. I, my, my, my thoughts are that the master plan should sit on the, on the, on the sideburner for a little bit, at least until we approve the capital forecast, which is looking at the next couple of years. And then, fine, we can, then this council's in a position to go ahead and approve the master plan. But that's, that's my only objection, and because of that, I again will not be supporting it as it stands now, and I'd like a recorded vote.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Gazola. I will deal with that item separately. An apologies, Mr. Hagy.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, no, I, I agree with everything that Counselor Gazola has said. First off, in his earlier point, the, the work that's being done through the ARP that should be included as part of the master plan, I think it identifies to a larger extent the, the increases that are required and what that work is enabling. Otherwise, it's, it's hard to associate. It's tough for us to understand sometimes, and I would venture to say it's even tougher for the public to see that transparency of why the increases are necessary. That aside, we haven't yet, as Counselor Gazola has already touched on this as well, we haven't yet increased the, the utility to the, the amounts that have been recommended to allow the work for the master plan as well as the ARP. So would it not be better to, you've said, you know, what comes first, like chicken or the egg? But prudently, it's better for us to have the approval for the budget and then really outline. Otherwise, we would have to reevaluate and readjust the, you know, the components of the master plan, would we not? My dream come true. Counselor goes ahead and goes opposite to what the recommendation is, and we, we give our ratepayers a break and only increase it by an inflationary rate. That would significantly reduce the amount of revenue required to do the work. What would happen then?
Mr. Hagy? Through the mayor, so again, I would just make the point that in this sense, you're talking about if we deal with the budget first and then have to come back and amend the, the master plan, because the budget's passed differently. If we, the opposite could also be true, where you approve the master plan, which actually provides direction on what to put in budget. If that were to change, we'd have to adjust the budget after the fact.
That's fair, but?
So we're going to have to amend one or the other.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I, and I realize that's kind of the answer you gave to Counselor Gazola, and I appreciate your, your keeping to that point, and I understand it. But is it also fair for us to assume we're not tied to this master plan? We shouldn't link the master plan to what the budget increases require. It, council has a right and to make that choice if they want to go ahead with the increase as recommended, as required by the master plan, but they can deviate from that. Just by, because we are approving the master plan, doesn't necessitate that we're also automatically committing to the increase as part of budget.
So if the question is that clear, as to essentially, are you, is council handcuffed in the budget process by approving the master plan? I would say no.
Okay, I appreciate you.
I would also like to just mention that I believe it was last week, there was a, at the operating budget, the information that was provided to each counselor about where the funding sources will be. A lot of it in the early years is existing capital balances and the capital reserve fund from stormwater. So a lot of this work can still move forward without that increase. A lot of the increase that council's going to be considering related to stormwater deals with the ARP program, the maintenance increase, and not so much with the integrated stormwater master plan.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Redman, you didn't need that anymore. Okay, Counselor Davy?
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on, on the distinction, because when I look at this, and maybe I'm understanding it incorrectly, but the master plan is something that with current projections, we're supposed to be able to do in, for the next 10 years. But I guess I'm confused about the concern about the budget, because do we not have the ability to change the capital budget every year?
So we have two people, Mr. Redman and Mr. Hagy. Let's start with Mr. Redman instead.
Through the mayor, the council has an option to, to set the budget every year. So that would defer programs in both the ARP program and the stormwater master plan. It should be cognizant of council to recognize that ARP is about 51 kilometers behind where we should be, and the master, the stormwater master plan, only about 25% of the city is currently covered by appropriate stormwater quality and quantity controls. So there's 75% of the city that needs to be done.
Yeah, I, I don't need to be reminded of that. I'm cognizant of that. No, I just, my, my only point, and just in a brief comment, is that, like, I'm a little bit confused, because by this logic, we should never approve the, any master plan, because we revisit the budget every single year. So the idea is you approve a master plan, then you try and figure out how to implement it over subsequent years.
Well, there's a few master plans that we have that have waited a long, long time. Counselor Gazola? Last word, and then we're voting.
Yeah, no, no, I just want to point out that, I mean, staff have already set the tone for price increases for the next 10 years, and that the, the master plan's already stated that. So that, that's already, that, that's already in it. The point I'm trying to make is that really, the buck stops with council, and it's up to council to approve changes in the capital forecast. And that process has not been completed. I, I'm not arguing with the, with the goodness of all of this, but, but really, there is a role for staff and a role for council. And I think council should be allowed to play their, to play their role and should have some say in the things that are being changed. You may have different opinions on what staff are recommending, which is, which is fine, and that's the way it should be. So the two really have to go hand in hand. And the other point that I give you from 900 years of experience is that when master plans get into place, they pretty much stay there, and there's always reasons down the road, and people say, well, it's in the master plan. We have no choice.
Counselor Singh, do you really have something important to add yet?
Well, I like to think everything I say is important, but I'll let you be the judge. No, thank you, Counselor Davy, for outlining how budgeting works. I appreciate that. My concern is, I like to be a realist, and that's why I was asking that question, especially when we're approving a master plan so close to budget. And it's better for us to outline expectations according to what we can afford and what we're, in the future, what we're, we're outlining those budgets for. And that was my concern, but it was alleviated by Ryan's, Mr. Hagy's answer, but I appreciate your further clarification.
Counselor Galloway-Sealock?
Just two points that I want to make. One is that in all likelihood, if this master plan was dealt with early in the year, we wouldn't be having this discussion, because we'd still be dealing with it at capital budget in a week. So I don't think timing makes a difference. And two, I'd like to believe that every master plan that's been put in place would be implemented and move forward, but unfortunately, that is not the case with some of the master plans that we have. So I, I wouldn't agree with the comment that every master plan is put in place and just continues to proceed forward.
Okay, so I'll deal with number six first, since we've spoken so eloquently about it. Recorded vote, did you ask for Counselor Gazola? Okay. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Balance of the report, those in favor? Those opposed? It's carried unanimously. Counselor Davy, financing corporate services, and just a reminder that in dealing with number one, Counselor Davy, we have to add the chicken, the new chicken by law fee. So over to you.
Yes, thank you. I did have that here. So it's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sarah Marsh, that the two items of financing corporate services be adopted. And I do actually have a question regarding number one to the clerk, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was actually going to amend back to the 2%, but I realized that might be contrary. So would you, if I wanted to consider the 2% against, or the 1.75, should, would the appropriate course be to not have that amendment, but just vote against it and then introduce a new suggested percentage? Or could I, or could I bring back the 2%? Just the way it's written, it looks like it might be contrary.
That's a, I'm seeing head nods. Okay, that's a yes.
And I'll want to speak to that as well.
Okay, go ahead then.
Okay. Yes, so since we dealt with this, we did have our, our operating budget, and we had some, I would say surprises, not the least of which was the, our liability in the, our WSIB reserve. I also, and I wanted to be clear on this point when it comes to user fees, that when we reduce our user fees, we're not really saving, we're saving some people money, but making other people pay. So what happens is, yes, those people that use those specific services will save a little bit of money, but all that means is every single penny that's saved goes back to every single taxpayer. So it's not a, it's not a net zero thing. So I also wanted to point out, I actually looked a little bit late, I couldn't find the increases for the city of Waterloo suggested, but I did find the city of Cambridge, their user fees are projected to go up by 2.2%. And I believe I read that their sports fields and pool-related activities are actually going up about 3%. So even though it's, it's not, in the context of our larger budget, it's not a huge amount of money. We're talking about, I think, $30,000. I do think it's prudent, and again, it is a drop in the bucket in our WSIB reserve, but my advantage will always be is, it's better to have some drops going into the bucket than none at all. So I would urge members of council to vote against the 1.75% and reintroduce the 2% to help us get over some of those holes.
Okay, so you're asking for that item to, just vote on that one separately? Okay, so we will deal with the 1.75% rate piece separately. So I'll deal with that now. That is correct. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion does not carry. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. I would move 2%. And I would also, actually, other bit of information I forgot to mention is, we do have updated inflation numbers. Thank you, Mr. Hagy. And we are actually up from, for 2016, it's up from 1.75 to 1.8% to date.
Thank you. Counselor Singh?
Well, I'll just make my comment. I'm not going to support it. I had hoped that the earlier motion would have passed. I think if the, the rationale, of course, any assistance to our WSIB reserve would be prudent, especially seeing the deficit that we're in. But with that rationale, I think the, the right thing to do, the responsible thing to do, would be to also increase our taxes, so that we, our reserves are adequately funded. But we choose not to, because we consider what our residents can afford and try to maintain that commitment, as what our residents have said to us, that they prefer increases. And I think my consideration increases our utility rates, tax rates, and user rates at inflation. It can't be different with one and totally different perspective on another, which may be a little bit more publicly noticed. I think we have to be fair across, and that's why I can't support it.
Counselor Iannidis?
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I originally had questioned that in our committee meetings, and, you know, my concerns with regards to the user fees is, when we keep increasing the user fees above the rate of inflation that we have, since the term I've been on council, it's always been pretty well close to more, over the rate of inflation. These are the individuals that are always, these are the ones who, that use these fees are the ones that probably need it the most, the break. And that's, that's, that's why I wanted to go more this year with the rate of inflation. Granted, it's only 25,000, I think staff, I made that pretty clear. I think staff could find a way to, to absorb that in their budgets. And I wanted to give our, our taxpayers a little, our user users at least a little bit of a break, because again, we're, we're seeing increases in all the others, and this is the only one I think that we can actually at least give a bit of a break.
Counselor Gazola?
Election's two years away, and we're into the silly season already. Yes, the amount of money we're talking about here is really minimal. It really has, I, I've supported it when Counselor Iannidis brought it forward, and who's now changed his mind, but I supported it just on the fact that we, we have to show a little compassion to our ratepayers, to our users, to our taxpayers. You know, it's, it's such a minor thing, but it does, it would have shown that we, we are concerned with, with all of the humongous increases we're going to be facing in, on the utility side of it. And we don't have the option of saying we made a mistake like some levels of government do. So I, I'm not going to support the change. I'm going to support what was here and approved by the committee last week.
Yeah, just quickly, I think... Yeah, just quickly, I think, a couple of points that need to be made, and if I remember correctly, I didn't support the 1.75 in committee. We have leisure access fees that can, the leisure access card, that can be used for those who can't afford programming, and I think we've, as a council, have significantly increased that budget over the last number of years, to try and make sure that we have the ability to assist people in participating in, in our programs. And there's a number of different fees that we are, we're talking about here, so it's not just recreational fees. And I think there's been a number of times around this horseshoe where the argument's been made, whether it's through arts and culture, or rec, or whatever, that the user should pay versus the taxpayer, and I think that's what we come back down to. Staff recommended the 2 percent in our recommendation from staff, we obviously have the ability to change that, but I think 2 percent is fair, and I think the point I made in committee is that we're really talking about pennies to each user, when we're only talking about $30,000 across the board of all the fees that we use here at the, at the city. And so I think, at the end of the day, I think we should stick with the 2 percent, and the user pays versus it be subsidized by the taxpayer.
Councilor Iannidis?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Verbanovic. I just wanted to point a clarification from Councilor Gazola. I didn't change my mind, I don't know, maybe you made a mistake.
I thought you were the one that moved the recommendation last week that we go to, that we go to, and the clerk's nodding her head, so. I didn't think the last vote, though, you were on that side of it, I don't know.
He was. So we are now going to deal with the amount at one point, sorry, at two? Yes, at two. So we'll go back to the original recommendation? Okay. Is that correct? Yeah, so I'm just going to deal with the two first, because I think people want that dealt with separately, and a recorded vote has been requested. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. Balance of the report, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Counselor Singh, planning and strategic initiatives. Go ahead, Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From planning and strategic initiatives, item one, that staff consult on the new zoning bylaw component C, first draft in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act, and as further outlined in the Community Services Department Report, CSD-16070, and that has been seconded by Counselor Iannidis.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Heritage Kitchen, or number two. Counselor Janetski, and Mr. Farwell's here to answer any questions, if there are any, I take it? Yep. Hold on, got to turn you on, go ahead.
Yeah, this is in regards to the notice to demolish certain structures of the property address, is 617-621 King Street West, better known as the Rat Spectral Funeral Home, the additions that have been added on over the years, and dated September 23, 16, be received for information, and notice period run its course, as outlined in the staff report, CSD-16066.
It's been moved by Counselor Janetski and seconded by Councilor Gazola. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We'll move on now to unfinished business, new business. Just one quick thing, two quick things actually to port on from the region. Number one, the regional budget process has, has commenced. We've had our first, our first budget day, and it's going to continue over the next month and a half, much like it is here at the, at the city. Variety of challenges that we're working through. The second part that I will, I will touch on is, as you know, council took a position on the regional development charge, and Counselor Davie presented that at the region. There's a new report coming to regional committee tomorrow with respect to the DCs, particularly as they relate to transit and garbage, and that, the new recommendation is different than the original one, so instead of kicking in right away in the downtown area where we do have exemptions, the suggestion is it would kick in one year from now, on January 1, 2018. We're continuing our work between now and tomorrow to see it be consistent with the other, with the other exemption, but we'll, we'll see what happens tomorrow at committee. So I just wanted to update council on, on that. Questions and answers? Not, then we'll move on to bylaws, first reading, and in, in reading the bylaws, we will have the amended chicken bylaw, is what we're, we're going to be dealing with this evening. Are there any late starters, Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just the late starter regarding the chicken bylaw with the amended clause regarding grandfathering.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved by Counselor Marsh, seconded by Counselor Schneider, that lead be given the mover and securer to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that the same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to the committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Fernandez, council resolve itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Counselor Fernandez?
Okay, so all the tenders have been moved, the sign variance, number two. Sorry, bylaws for second reading, yep. All those in favor? That's moved.
Two, two sub one, actually, that you have to deal with. Sorry, two sub one on, on fence. I'll move it.
Right, okay, thank you. So it's been moved by Mayor Verbanovic. All those in favor? That's moved. Down to number three, applications for cancellation refund on taxes, any questions?
Counselor Gazola has a question. We did it earlier. Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, that's all right. Counselor Gazola, you have a question?
I had two, and I can only find one. I'm just curious, is there any explanation we can give for the, the gross, gross or manifest clerical error on item 32 to 39, which resulted in tax reductions of $61,000? 32 to 37 are the bulk of that, what?
Okay, Mr. Ryan, or Mr. Hagy? Did the same thing as you.
So those are a result of errors from MPAK?
Result of what?
Errors from MPAK.
No, I, yeah, I knew it wasn't our staff error.
Okay, sorry.
But to me, an error, there, there's some pretty big errors there, I just, do we not have any idea what they're about, or say to MPAK, you know, why are you getting paid?
I, I don't know what to answer to pride, we don't, we don't have additional information about it.
All right, that's fair enough. Okay, I wonder if you could, if it's possible?
I'll note it, and we can follow up.
Okay, the, the other one was on the, on the places that became exempt. Item number nine is a fairly substantial one, and I just missed it, because there, there's no, there's no decimal point in there, so it's actually $65,000. What would something like that be? Again, maybe this is something you can, you want to bring back?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Singh, you have a question?
Yeah, maybe I shouldn't know this, but I'll ask anyways. For the region of Waterloo, they're exempt automatic to pay property taxes, or is this related to something else?
Mr. Hagy?
So municipal properties do not pay taxes, they would pay a payment in lieu of taxes.
So we would have a positive balance somewhere else, then?
We, yes, we would have a payment through a PIL, or a payment in lieu.
Okay, all right.
Okay, that's all the questions. I need a mover, I don't have a mover yet. Counselor Davie? All those in favor? And that passes, thank you. Number four, declaration of surplus and sale of 345 King Street West, as attached, so moved by Counselor, sorry, Counselor Janetski. Any questions? Okay, I have two conflicts that are noted for this item. Any questions? All those in favor? And that passes, thank you. Then, an information item on work gloves? It's, okay. Right, that the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interest and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held the state as attached here unto and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed. All those in favor? Seconded by Counselor Janetski.
It's been moved by Counselor Marsh, seconded by Counselor Schneider, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried, and it's been moved by MT, apparently whoever's MT is. It's been, what? Oh, Ms. Fletcher.
Through the mayor, there was a second part of the user fees item on the financing corporate services.
Oh, did I not? You're right, I didn't go back to that, thank you.
No, it was a committee of the whole item, I just, I was waiting for committee of the whole for it to come out, so.
There was an additional committee of the whole? Oh, so, so the clerk took it that I covered it off when I said the balance of the report?
Beautiful.
Okay, we're efficient, don't worry. Sometimes. Motion by Counselor Etherington, that we now adjourn, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And a reminder that we have to go back into caucus.